...process, we want to see the time and time again between these, you know, we pay for the services that you see. What's HWI? Which is an HWI project?
Well, good evening, everyone. We will now get to our committee of the whole meeting for this evening.
Yeah.
And to call it to order, please, and please let the minutes show that all of the council is in attendance with the exception of Councilwoman Michael Walton. We have members of our staff here and members of the media. So welcome to everyone. Thank you for joining us. Item three is approval of the agenda.
Councilor Smith will move the approval of the agenda.
I have a second, please.
Councilor Griffin, second.
Been moved and seconded to approve the agendas for this evening. Any questions on the agenda? Hearing none. All those in favor, raise your hand. Motion is carried. Item four is approval of the committee of the whole minutes from October 27.
Councilor Smith will move the approval of the minutes of the committee of the whole October 22.
Seconded, Councilor Griffin.
Moved and seconded to approve those minutes. Any questions? Hearing none. All those in favor, raise your hand. Motion is carried. Item five is conflict of interest. Anyone this evening want to declare that? Move on to item seven. Seven one is a report from our C A O, Rob Weber.
So I intended to present that in both, presented a submitted report count, so I will speak that in both and put it all in.
Perfect, thank you. Item seven two is the finance report with treasure.
Okay, so I included in your package the financial report as of October 31. I kind of put it in a little bit different order this time because we wanted to talk about complex first. You talked about complex at the end, but we've given you an updated complex budget. As of November 20th, the overall budget for the complex has increased to thirteen million, four hundred and twenty thousand dollars. Biggest difference there, it continues to be some change orders that trickle through. The electrical change orders, we did receive one this week for the fire pump. It was forty six thousand dollars for that change order for electrical alone. And we have been advised by our construction management company that we can expect to see another hundred thousand dollars in electrical change orders at this point. So those are the biggest things that have impacted that budget and changed it from the thirteen two that we were around last month, for sure. So when we talk about that increase to our budget, we have to talk a little bit about how to fund that overage. And the next sheet that was included in your package was basically a funding model that we've been following all along. And at this point in time, it looks like we will have to take two hundred and sixty thousand dollars out of our operating. And these are discussions that we have had for the last few months about where do those dollars come from? We've been in talks with our auditors about whether or not this will become a tax rating type of issue, or whether we can fund it from what we have called our unrestricted cash that we have had available to us that has been building over the last few years. So where we are sitting as of today, or as of October 31st, I should say, is that we have been running a surplus in our general, excuse me, that is running us about three hundred and twelve thousand, seven hundred dollars for it now, or as of October 31st. And at this point in time, we are taking the conservative route and saying that if this does become something that does affect our actual surplus, then we will forego doing the rest of our reserves for this year. At this point in time, we've already done half. We're not saying that we're going to take those back. We know we still have another forty thousand dollars in debenture payments in November and December. Some of those have already happened. But at this point in time, if this surplus, or if this overage does not change and this has to come out of our general surplus, we would still be in a slight surplus for the year. So those questions remain to be answered by our auditors. And they will be getting their package very early in January, so they can answer some of these questions for us, for sure. But this is what we're recommending at this point in time is that we don't do any further reserves until we reserve transfers, until we have answered this question, whether or not it will affect our overall general surplus. We've been told by our auditors that the surplus that we've had over the last two years, because of the complex, that we ignore it, but we know that this year it will be a deficit for the complex, because that just makes sense. This year, we've had more costs than we've had revenue. So we do continue to fundraise. The fundraising has not stopped. We are selling seat plaques every day. There hasn't been a day that has passed since the opening that we haven't had a seat plaque sold. So we continue to fundraise. We are continuing to have talks with all of our vendors that are part of the complex and part of our world. And we have had some offers of donations, haven't got the dollars actually in the bank account yet, but we can count them. So these numbers change definitely every day, but at this point, as Rob says, we need to take the conservative route until we know absolutely for sure how these numbers are going to affect our bottom lines. Water and sewer, at this point in time, we are looking at a twenty thousand dollar deficit. And again, the biggest part of that twenty thousand dollars is the credits that we gave back earlier in the year for some billing issues that have happened over the last couple of years, and we've explained that previously. So if this continues into our December 10th meeting, it will be a recommendation that we pull back the twenty thousand dollars that we had moved over into our operating reserve and bring it back so that we're not sitting in a deficit position, but something to think about as we go forward.
But also through, we're experiencing less revenues?
So we actually have, thanks to Jennifer and Jed's team, we were able to pull off our metered water while we were trying to open up the complex. So we got all that done, got the bills out. We were anticipating a twenty thousand dollar revenue and we're at thirty two. So not as bad as we thought. So that will definitely change those numbers for November, as long as everything hangs together on the water side. Anyway, so some good news there.
Can you explain a little further about the increase in the electrical?
Oh, the change orders? Yes.
Well, I mean, I can hold your business. A good number of them were related, as you say, to the fire and the construction. And there is no simple way to characterize the balance of the change orders, other than to say that they largely are attributable to changes in design over time. And things that were adjusted, modified in the design, everything like location of location of electrical circuits and changing rooms to various other things. So it's it's not a short story. It gets pretty detailed.
So any other questions? That's interesting.
It does. Thank you.
Item seven three, communications and about, shall I get it?
So over the past month, there's been a few things that I'll highlight on here. We had great public opening, the great turnout, as you all know. And I, Jennifer and I did the we hosted a draft or prize pack, so people could put their name in for it and they could encourage them to sign up for the notification system if they weren't already. So we had gotten lots of new folks who wanted to sign up for that system, so that worked out really well. And we can look into doing something similar for the grand opening next year when that takes place, to see if we can get a few more names on that. And under the newsletter, so I did distribute the one that was in your council package, the draft newsletter. It's been changed a little bit since then. So the one that's printed out in your package is the latest and greatest version of it. So you'll see there's a few spots left to fill, and mostly it's just photos at this point. So that's almost finished. And then there will be a dispatch about the article on the front page so that council can confirm they're okay if they need any adjustments to the wording there. But that's a later agenda items. And then that newsletter, so you will see it's longer. It does include a full four pages extra, which most of that is dedicated to the new community complex, to give people lots of information about the facility and about the programs there. So my plan is to get this sent off to the printing company the end of this week and that they would be able to have over the Christmas, you know, up until New Year's, so that I could be able to pick that up and get it distributed. And hopefully the postal service will be functioning again. Then as far as grants go, we had applied, you'll remember a while back for firm credit Canada. So we had applied for twenty five thousand dollars for the community kitchen in the community complex, but that did not get approved. We also applied for the Harton Strove Foundation's A E D subsidy program for a new A E D cabinet and accessories. That was denied as well. And then the Celebrate Canada application, that's been submitted. Council did that one had been submitted. So what that is, that's the annual July first grant, the Canada Day grant. So that money helps us be able to have some celebrations and do some events on Canada Day. So that has been submitted. Then as far as the downtown waterfront revitalization project, so council had approved at the November 12th meeting for staff to go ahead and apply for the APOA and R B C grants to help with that project. And both of those applications were submitted November 13th. It's anticipated that that will take two to two and a half months before we hear back on that. So no quick answers, but it is submitted and we'll have to wait and see what happens there. For planning and development, there were three building and development permits issued in the month of October totaling six hundred and fifty eight thousand of construction value. So our year-to-date construction value is five million, six hundred, one thousand, eight hundred dollars. That's a really great, great news for the area. And that should, some of that should convert into tax assessment and some property tax revenue there, too. And we, I've given the link to an article, so there's another great tourism article that was published on our area. And it included a mention of the Pepper Bridge and some area businesses. So I did provide the link there for council to check out. So the link, it is referring to the French Fry Capital of the world, but it was a bit of a regional, you know, visit that they did. So it's talking about some things in multiple municipalities, but we certainly got a great mention there. And then the first self-guided tour has been added to our website. So you remember I did give a grant for a thousand dollars through the Gross Moore Institute. And I have been doing that. I actually just presented my project today. Our last class was today, so I presented that to the group. But I was too anxious and I already had it added to our website even before the, even before the last class. So I did share that link with some of the folks who helped provide the photography and videos and those sorts of things so that they could get a look at it, and there's a mention and they're given credit in it. So some of the people were really excited and so I'm hoping they'll work with me to give me some bullet points and some other photos and videos and things so that we can add to that inventory on our website so that people can have a few different ones to pick from and then be able to continue to add to them over time. So you can check those out. It is on our website and the link is there. It's under the tourism. I think it's under virtual tour, under tourism. Are there any questions?
Yeah.
Under grants and funding?
Yes.
Is it your intention, or I don't even know if they're still available, but I know in the past we've missed out because of the timing. Is it your intention to apply for environmental trust funding?
So I've looked at that one in trying to make it fit with different things. I thought that maybe on the waterfront project there'd be a fit, and so I approached them and explained some of the components with it as far as the boat rent station, the signage with the boat rent station. I forget what else there was. They basically came back and said they don't fund infrastructure. They can do education. So it scaled it back to maybe some of the signs. So we did not, I did not submit, because it was going to be such a small application, that I'm hoping we can get something meaningful to be able to use for that to apply.
We're hoping in the near year to broaden our relationship with the Carlton McToyle and producers in relation to the town's too large woodlot areas?
Mm-hmm.
Would that possibly?
I understood that that program was more, it would generate revenue by selectively cutting what's there. No? Okay.
No, we're not. We haven't determined what our intentions will be on the properties yet.
Okay, because I know C A O Weber had sent a request to the Calcatore Wood Producers, but it was an online thing, so I haven't seen what the request was, and I don't believe we've gotten a response, or
We've not.
We've not gotten a response, so that'll be something new to
I'm thinking down the road, once we have more information, maybe that potentially might actually in the future.
Yeah, there have been different things that have come up, and every time I go back to them, they're like, no, that's infrastructure, can't do that. So it's really been, it's more of an educational thing, and it seems like it's usually used for studies. So it's more studies before there is something shovel in the ground, something to be bought or whatever. And so it's a two-pronged thing, so we have to have the funding for whatever it is in the end, because we've got to be able to pay a portion of whatever the E T F doesn't cover. So we just need to use it strategically somewhere. So it is on my radar, and I have been checking on some different things, but I think this year it would have been like three thousand dollars. Like it was really minimal, so I did not apply for that one.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions?
Well, thank you for the financial roadmap that's put in, because we said that would be really critical for people to see as a front page item. And just a note, maybe based on our discussion, what we saw written in Frederick Velphy's report is to review the numbers that are in the article. I think they might need to be readjusted, but that's great. No, thank you very much. Well done.
We will move to item seven four, recreation report with John Mybrow.
Good evening, everybody. So current events, a little bit carryover from my last discussion, the Schofield Southern Podcast, Schofield and Phil. Hopefully add more to that as well with our guest speakers and obviously a lot more information out of development. Current public skate is ongoing, starting from the night of the 5:30. And we are planning additional public skates during Tuesdays and Thursdays around noon hour for more availability. In Ross Center Recreation, so obviously a lot of things going on and can be happening soon. Learn to Skate, we had our first session for Learn to Skate yesterday. Great turnout, increase from what we've had in the past, so that's good to see. I think everyone's excited about some new program offerings and obviously the new facility. One of the things that really kept it up here, obviously, is capture therapeutics. So they're scheduling their free fitness class starting December 5th. Classes are suitable for all fitness totals and registration coming down to capture therapeutics. And the gentleman Alex, who's their community geologist, who's maybe running the program through the facility, which passes around a kind of a fervent paper to look at. And finishing community room bookings are available. The community room, we are reviewing some financing situation on the technical department, but in terms of renting a space in the fitness room or the larger space in the community room, we are now opening that, we will be making that one evident as we go into the beginning of next week. The first paint night that we've had in a while, we'll schedule the doll course for our November 29th. That's always a great turnout and we look excited for that. Also, our first what night? Paint night. I don't think we've had a paint night since the foundation, so paint night, stick to the paintings.
Paint, P-A-I-O-N-T?
That's correct.
You can write a paint gun if you want to.
Artists, artists, and you hang along with the artists and you have a good time. I'll bring my little, there you go. Bring the airbrush.
I'm sorry, but I'm still what's paint night?
Sip and paint.
Hey?
Sip and paint.
Brush paint, finger paint, paint, art.
Oh, body paint.
Ball brushes. I'm going to leave.
We got it.
Sorry, we've got
No, it's good. Thanks, Josh. I'm really excited to look at that. And then we have our, so just a list of some operations in regards to the new complex. I think we're all in the running since opening night. We were very fortunate to get the canteen open running with health from some very important parties. In addition to special events and hockey games, it will be open for set hours during the week and on weekends. Those are posted as well, on-site in the facilities. Walking track, obviously, has been a huge draw for us, very popular in the areas. We have it regulars every day, which is great to see. And it comes as well, directional arrows and the walking track for acts in distance are being posted. And yeah, it's just, it's a great introduction, kind of keeps people going, changing the direction of the neighborhood every day. Just knowing what they're accomplishing by seeing that, you know, up and visible is great. And then the public lockers are now available for visitors to go to the lines and winter footwear apparel. We advise that visitors bring their own lock, the registered belongings will often be provided at this time. So if you're concerned about anything along those lines, please bring your own lock and you can secure it that way. Cubbies are currently being constructed as well by the shop class at the Hilton School, so they're assisting us with this project. So for those who don't want to use lockers, cubbies would be available as well. Matrix Fitness was on-site last week to set up the equipment for the fitness room. Free weights, aerobic steps, and more available for users. And as we get going through the rest of the weekend and into next, scheduled times for classes and general use will be announced for sending them into the video. During the room available, availability will be announced shortly. Like I stated, we were screening up some people on touches. The licensing for the kitchenette is ongoing. I had to wait for the kitchenette to be completed to do that. But once we have our final inspection, then the kitchenette will be licensed and put in some time and they'll prepare light foods for the virtual parties or special events and use the community room in that area. Advertising space in the arena is also filling up very quickly. The fan-facing board space has all been sold and has been sold for some time. And there is limited space available on the player-facing board, so that's great to see. It's great to see the interest in that and support. The scoreboard and sound system functionality have been just a great success story for the complex itself. The scoreboard has, we have received a lot of compliments. It's abused by the, you know, the people timekeeping. It's very modern, very new.
I have a question on that, John.
Yes.
With the scoreboard, is there any way to change it? I know there's a little bit of a controversy for her, the first goal on first night, because it looked like the time had run out, but there's no tenth of a second on the clock when it gets down. Is there a way to change that?
I can dive deeper into the article. No, there's time to answer that, but I can look into that and get that, too.
Yeah, I mean, it's not a huge deal, but that definitely, because the first goal Martin scored looked like the time had run out, but actually it hadn't because it went to tenths of a second.
Down to a tenth of a second, now it is? I don't know. The score is now probably rolling over.
No, I will look into that. And the sound system, the sound system has been working great. The guy, very easy to use from people in the box, all the walkers complimenting on it. And it's just, it's a great atmosphere. We were really concerned initially about the crucifix in the building, the metal and being an open space, but it hasn't been administered, so very fortunate.
I might just add one thing, Jed's been a few term, but you asked a question, just add a little more detail of the question in the mirror and I suppose that it can do this. A lot of the things were technical, the network, the audio system, the scoreboard, same system. The wiring to those components was not in the original plan. The locations of all these inputs and things, so most everything we put in, like the two E monitors and things, ended up, a lot of them anyway, ended up being the same.
But you might mean the bumping?
Yes.
Light bed as well.
Yeah.
The safety factors, the walk and the lights and signs, the lighting, some of that was underthought and added on after that, which again, Martin can figure out.
I have this effect, thank you.
And some security and safety issues to that point, the alley and the tunnel, alley, the walkway underneath the bleachers will soon be gated off. We've ordered safety gates to go across that, so that is a clear access area. And change tables have also been ordered. I understand that was for some people. We have ordered them. They're on the way. As soon as they arrive, they will be located in the public washrooms on the dressing room floor. And certain news as well for the community room and the facility as a whole. Right now, we're in talk with Toilet Kids Daycare, who's staffs using the community room on the basis of the need for our after school daycare program. And they are interested in using that space. It's standing in town, and it's just a more convenient location for a lot of parents. And currently, the communication is being done with the parents to see if that's something they would be interested in going and switching their location for the after school. So it is an avenue around for certain right now. Christmas 2025, so we've had a couple of events here and there, but as we get into December, December 8th, we have our teddy bear toss scheduled during the Heartland versus St. Leonard game. It's going to be their game. I understand St. Leonard's sports team and Heartland's on the roll. St. Anne's game is scheduled for December 13th from 5:30 to 6:30. How chocolate entries will be offered, followed by family activity. A gingerbread house feeding contest scheduled for the 17th of December as well, and we are accepting registration. And if anyone's been into the facility recently, you know, it's at the Christian Street in Hawaii. That is going to be a commitment tree that the Brecht team is organizing, and all the nation will be going with department helpers. And so they can come in and start committing, pass, and hand them on to you. And staffing, so as part of, I guess, the launching of the facility comes new staff and new positions. So we've hired for three part-time recreation tenants who have started and have been working very well, keeping the facility clean and assisting in recreation programs. And then starting next week, you will have a full-time custodian dedicated to the ability in some other town projects. Um, and again, the person to start to start on the tenth fourth and the leadership commission, I'm saying, um. Again, believe that we, uh, they are our community center. Person? Sir?
F? Are the public states, uh, funded by the community, the direct department, or, or do we have sponsors for any of those?
Sure, funded.
The public states.
I think it's two dollars.
It's two dollars, it's two, sorry, yeah, it's, it's a two dollars fee for publicity.
But under certain ages free.
But we would, we changed it, it used, it used to be more and then we just put two dollars a possibility.
Two dollars plus both.
Yeah.
So could a, an interested individual or company sponsor that?
Absolutely, that nice.
And with the Learn to Skate program, are the inspectors from our staff or are the others?
Yeah, so ours, Sean, it's Sean Sullivan, he's one of the instructors and Dana, um, they were. They did research and they're up to date with some of their Learn to Skate programs for different age levels. So prior to the season, they, um, I guess they educated themselves to improve our program from last year.
And the tree lighting, has that been resold?
It hasn't not yet, we will leave it in that short, we're just trying for a good one today at this point.
We would rather.
Yeah.
Uh, I just want to say thank you to all those involved in making the opening such a success, uh, a couple of weeks ago and. All the ongoing efforts and it's really appreciated, so thank you to you, Ron.
Thank you, John.
All right, we will move on to our public works.
Invokes across, people have a chance for, we know it's going to hit a few highlights. Uh, McMullen rode holes, uh, I wanted to put them over that because. Mr. Witten has, it's stuck up to me.
Are they gonna, are they gonna survive the winner?
Yes.
Okay.
And we will continue to monitor it.
Uh, thank you.
The water ensure, uh, the two biggest things being the building report is an ongoing, which is, uh. A very large report that I'm working my way through and in constant contact with, uh, the engineers that do them consulting, uh. The booster station, uh, we have, we've had another issue with, uh, pump one, that is our main pump, refilling our water tower. Due to, uh, what we believe be overuse for, there's only the one to supply that tower, uh, the bearings failed again. So, uh, we were into a, a whole rebuild again with the, with the bearings and seals, uh. For town properties, uh, due to patient, we did. Uh, I, I want to note, uh, we did do, uh, heavier framing of the rose bushes and had bushes to defeat something a little bit. Uh, nicer looking hopefully in the spring, uh, they were getting a little bad, he had, uh, so brought them back, but I do want, but. Anytime we touch the rose bushes, it's, oh, then, uh, let's focus on the community, get it, get it cited, uh, I just wanna, just wanna put it out there. We're, we're not eliminating them, we're just trying to make them look more vibrant, uh, come the spring. Uh, as well on that, another big one is the streetlights, uh, as many of you have probably noticed. Between the library and the back of the bridge, there's been an issue with a few lights for some time now. Uh, we were back and forth with MB Power about who owned the whole, who's the possibility things were. Uh, we finally got through all that and fixed them up last week, uh, so now our names lift up now. Uh, including, uh, Christmas celebrations, but we put all those forward. Uh, shelf and equipment, uh, biggest problem with that would be that our J C B or backhoe, uh, has been down. My mechanic went to a second mechanic due to, uh, tardiness of showing up. Uh, he kept interim emergency today, it wasn't in the account, he was, he wants to be there today to talk this over, so he's hoping to have more answers for you folks. Uh, but right now we believe it to be, uh, two pumps. But backhoe is something we need to do a serious, uh, deep dive into because there is, uh. A whole slew of issues that I won't get into, but tires, engine, a lot of things run on here, so. Scoring, yes. Need to look that one right title. Um, and then the Dan Ross Community Center, uh, we got our ice in, of course, as everyone's well aware, some, thanks, uh, to Markine for the good time he put in. Uh, and a big thanks to, uh, Jimmy Bradley for heading that up and, and really looking after that whole bit, uh. Everything else there, I mean, we've talked about the community center and you know that, that we've been involved in, so.
I have a question, Jed.
Yeah.
Um, other, other, uh, arenas or whatever you want to call it, have a rule and implement it. Whether the people slamming their sticks on the boards before games, after the bowls and stuff.
Good.
Um, I think we should look at doing something similar to ours because nothing will ruin the boards quicker than that.
Okay, I, I don't disagree, but I will pass that on to John to see his the operations.
Other, other facilities have that rule, they don't want you hitting their sticks on the boards, they can use their hands. It's just a really fast way to ruin the boards.
Yeah.
Well, and I think that your high school games in particular, pretty sure that MBI has a diet against that. It's not supposed to be occurring at all.
Yeah, but that needs to be all the way, it needs to be just a rule in our dressings posted and the referees, refereeing rooms posted, it is in other facilities. They don't want their boards being beat to pieces like that, I don't think ours should be either.
Well, no, we spent a lot of money and did a lot of hard work to get those boards here and we haven't, we won them back, yeah.
Question.
Yes.
Correct me if I'm wrong on the booster station, the pump, did we not discuss getting a new pump?
It's, it's in our five-year plan, uh, it, it wasn't, wasn't, uh, planned this year.
So we're still relying on that one pump?
Not solely, so there's three.
Well, there's a backup, I, I know, but.
There's three pumps in that station and, uh, three electric pumps, one reason, probably, that's, uh, they're, you know, uh, powered backup. Uh, the, the other two electric pumps cannot maintain a full water tower. The, the head pressure pushing against them, they can't fight it and fill the power, so we have. Our, our pump's kicking at forty feet, shut off at forty-five feet. Uh, the two other pumps running together cannot maintain anything more than about twenty-two to twenty-four feet.
So, the plan for to get him a, a second pump, is it in the works for two-five? Or is it going to be deferred to two-six, two-seven or further?
So it is in the plan right now, in the five-year plan, like Jed says. And, uh, we may have to adjust priorities as they come down the pipe, right?
So we, you need that back, that, that second pump desperately. Because if you don't have it and that thing breaks down, you can't feed water to the tower.
So one thing we have, um, I have a second pump, um. I can't explain how it got here, it was here before me, no one knows where it came from or anything, but it is a second pump. It's identical to the one we're running, so what we have done, it is now at Hartland Armature and to be rebuilt. So if this pump is to be down now, we will be able to just swap, uh, which should lessen the time. Taken to, uh, to get us back up and running, so.
So is the plan, is the plan in the future to have two pumps putting water in the tower?
Yes.
And another, um, thing with your question too, there may be some funding that comes our way in twenty twenty-five that we could include. We've been told that possibly including this, uh, second pump could be included in that funding, so that would again change it.
Cause that one pump, the bearing is going, going to go in it again, are they not? Cause it just cannot stand that over a long period of time.
Yes, uh, we, we hope that this will be a two-year bet, that's what. Uh, we hope, we hope, yes, I mean, anything can go wrong within time, uh, so that's one.
Perfect.
Yeah, that's what we're hoping, okay, and we have adjusted in our computer system, we can. Adjust where things turn on and wind, uh, so we've got the other two turning on a little sooner. Uh, they can't, they can't push it up there any higher, but it, it does. So when, when two are running instead of one, it shortens the time that that one is running.
So this other, this second pump that you found can cut it down, has he?
Yes.
Thank you.
Brilliant.
Thanks Jed, thank you Jed.
Thank you. And item six is our fire report, which you all have as well.
It's rising. I don't know. Maybe just for, maybe we heard.
No, be sure you can put panel, join the submission.
This might be one of the smallest reports we've seen, maybe.
I'm the one that was. But there we get the, the bass, you know, probably we had nine falls. The total of hundred and sixty-six hours, right? And right now we got two new young guys coming up like, uh, Mason Brown and Cole Fouts. And they're scheduled for, uh, level one for us in January. So, great, still trying to recruit people.
Only number of the large spellfire.
Yeah, the false alarms. Okay, it's a.
Listen here, it's alarm, no fire.
Yeah, that February shift side, there's, uh, alarm that comes in, like the central box system presented, because there's an automatic dispatch about. Like, uh, every bridge chip, every bridge golf, like that, they were smoking or smoking, skating, I think, ended up the alarm system. So we just went over and checked it. And then that was fine, when I wasn't there. And.
I was like, see, uh, it, uh, it was spoken to us.
Open job, quick, okay, and then the two other ones, this is the heart and reason, I guess they're working on the line system.
So we had fifteen people respond to the tell us?
Is there a? But, but, uh. Uh, Mike, find a warning about this here.
Yeah.
And they said that any, any amount of more alarms, they're going to be charged for it. And it seemed to just probably quiet now, and then all of a sudden they started again and then they're going to have, they're going to have smoke alarms, like heat. Cause heat, heat, but heat centered, it's starting smoke alarms, so that should cut down the alarms.
So a fight from Stuart West, red. Who, uh, who won the, who won the vehicle versus the moose, the moose or the vehicle?
Oh, God, yes. The power survived it. So, yeah.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
I have a question about how much does it cost for a false alarm like that?
Who?
Oh, I think people should understand that how much does that cost the fire department roughly?
Hour wise.
Right, sixteen hours.
And I don't know exactly how much it costs every time, it costs fuel for the truck.
I think three thousand dollars had been mentioned before in council.
I think it should be known that, that's how much it costs for. To get our fire department there for, for toast.
We go, we mention that up to the nurse and home, but like that. Yeah. Then the other ones, whether we get a call, like the golf line, we gotta go.
Absolutely.
Well, no choice.
Same as a hospital.
Yeah, there he's at.
Right.
Okay.
Thanks Royce.
Okay, so that concludes our reports, um, any regular business?
Um, we have.
Oh, yes, the newsletter budget.
So, uh, we shall begin going to die, uh, you going to admit I last, uh, in my intention to give a more thorough review of it. And I have not meant to do that, but, uh, just for council's information, this is largely, I think, what will be in there for content. Um, I think there's some minor edits to make the first paragraph, this, uh. Council budget section is a requirement and, and not just, uh. Restoring health, growth and quality, but, uh, you're bound to do it, um, carefully managing, uh, meets, uh, the, so I was gonna say, as councillor, um. Smith mentioned, the, the figures in that table will need to be adjusted slightly, they're very close to the math, but just. However, it's slightly off, um, is it the time this was produced, we didn't have the time on there, so. What is useful about this chart, I think, though, is it does show you the path from twenty twenty-four, uh, the tax increase in twenty twenty-four, I think it is the twenty twenty-five, the one that we just passed the council, so. That second row, if you will, will be updated, the third row will be updated, reflect the final rates. Um, what we're including there, cause I thought it was important, not just me, but we thought it was important. We, you can see we're adding in the provincial, uh, tax of the four-one-one-five for transportation because. In the twenty twenty-five total, you can see the total tax is that the five respective, uh, areas are paying. And so, so often we quote, we talk about, you know, the seventy cents or seventy-five cents, whatever. Back in the four-one-one-five that, um, that they're paying for transportation services from, through the province. So that gets you to a total figure and then as a last note, it shows you the percentage change. Twenty twenty-two over twenty twenty-five, again, those figures are slightly off, but they're, you know, certainly. Close and, um, so even though this is, it's tiny, it's very important information, I think if you're, uh, a resident Hartland, it sort of lays out. Quite clearly, um, last year's tax rate, this year's tax increase, uh, where we end up. Uh, what percentage change it represents and it shows you, uh, which isn't always down in the total tax that residents are paying. Um, Hartland, old Hartland, I'll call it, uh, and the new L S D, so, uh, there's that. Um, there are some other minor changes, um, for those reasons that we'll fix up, uh, but, uh. When this says, for example, the differential multiplier, the mean and change, actually it'll be decreasing, so. Um, that will put in, it'll be five percent, the fund current repair, the wire and seal increased by five percent. In twenty twenty-five, you know, et cetera, but these are very minor in the whole, this is what you'll. We'll make sure that it's accurate in all those respects and then we'll, uh, we'll be ready to publish, so.
Can I just, can I make a suggestion? Instead of it saying residents see a one percent increase and a five percent, I know those numbers have changed, can we put cents? Like how many cents it went up?
Uh, it, it is in there, that's what the, uh, that's what the tax increase represents.
The table is what he suggested.
No, but I'm, I understand that, but I mean, if people want to read it, they're going to say, I think, I don't know.
Well, the, in the second row, councillor, the one where it says like, for example, zero point zero one six one, that's point one six cents. So it is, uh, we could translate it into cents and make it a little more obvious if it wasn't, it's just that, uh, for the flow standpoint, it's. Easier to see the decimal, but, uh, be able to add it up, but, uh, that is what points those, those effectively are the chance increases in that second row.
I'd like to just make some questions, Michelle, she's our communications director, uh. In the story on the front page, it talks about, and I quote, as our C and P services. Waste collection and other regional services that form forty-five percent of the operating budget, end quote, um. I just want to fill it up to consideration. Now, policing has been a big issue, not just in our community, but also up and down the valley. Um. We focused on, on policing at various times over the last, you know, number of months and, and the last few years. Can we specifically say our C and P services cost more than a million dollars? Or use the real number?
We can.
See, I'm the one.
Yeah, we can do that.
And should there be some?
And with over a year increase, it's like, this year's pretty good, you know?
It is five or thirty-five times. Five point five or something like that.
But I think residents have a right to know that. A million dollars from their taxes is they spend on C and P services in this area.
And, and two things I might add, and I know there's not much room for text, but, um, we had a discussion, councillor Farrelly, about. Um, the reality that the, the services we get are at or below the cost of inflation. Right? And that, that may be something that's understated perhaps for a number of individuals. And, uh, and then the only other item is the fact that we do have a complex to pay for that, uh, we all agree to. Uh, I say the greater we, those that lived here more than seven years or eight years, agreed to that and we've never. Really levied the cost of that across the, uh, uh, the municipality, so it's time to start paying for that and. And we agreed we would, so there's another element for the increase in tax base in case people are wondering.
Public points.
Just great work, I appreciate it.
It's very packed and the pictures are, oh, yes, it's a really, it's a really nice newsletter. Especially these two fine gentlemen on the back. Really good, I like it. Um, okay. Item nine is the date of our next meeting, so, um, December tenth at six thirty, we will meet here as a council. And there will be no committee. And there will be no committee of the whole meeting for December.
Hmm. We wish you all the best.
Thank you, it's uh. You know, I've really enjoyed, it's been an honor to serve Hartland and the two councils that I've reported to, and. I've had great staff, and I like to think we did some good things, and uh. I'm glad, you know, we've come to a nice point, and being able to open a complex is a very. Important thing, uh, personally, that I, that we could get done while I was here and. Um, it was also, I should say, I think it's been mentioned in the meeting, but it was a tremendous team effort, so really, every member of our team. Contributed in a very significant way, um, to that successful opening of that, and was. Framing the, the faith leading up to the opening to get all that done. And it was an excellent, uh, team effort to do that, so. Certainly kudos and thanks to all the members I can do, I'm ready to pull that off, so. And we thank, I would say say thank you, and uh, obviously wish everyone the very, very best.
Could I ask you one more thing before we close? If you get a deal on some lobster and some scallops, could you let us know?
I, I don't think that will come in my way, but I'll take it to you in a month.
And before we, that's your. I think there's three things that probably sum up the, the work here that you've done wrong. It's the value added to the community, and really, I don't know, everybody really understands that. So you have a work ethic with second and um, and uh, and you're very passionate about the work that you do. And uh, you know, we can learn a lot from your example, and we thank you for it.
Motion to adjourn, your worship.